Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 10th meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. Our meeting is being recorded this evening for the public record. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, you must come up to one of the microphones provided, or when giving testimony online or on telephone, please give us your name, followed by your statement. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are done in this fashion. You are to direct your statements, questions, or responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for an answer. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings will be required to take an oath, and we thank you for your cooperation. On our agenda this evening... Page one. After our... We will have an election of chairman and vice chairman, followed by our approval of minutes from December 20th. And our one and only public hearing this evening is number 21-132-001 for the Pine Hill Run Concept Site Plan, followed by adjournment. Let the board members introduce themselves, starting with Ms. Summers.
Kim Summers.
Roll tide, BJ Hall.
Patty Robrecht.
Go Maryland Terps. Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Joe Fazekas.
Merle Evans.
We'll get there one day. Also with us this evening from staff, we have the Director of Land Use and Growth Management, Mr. Bill Hunt, and his planners Courtney Jenkins and Brandy Glenn, and their Administrative Coordinator Kimberly Wood. Also with us this evening from the county attorney's office is Mr. John Hauser. Donnie Mills is with us from the Department of Public Works and Transportation. From St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission, we have Kristy Hollander. And most important lady is Amy Carter. Back there are video media producer. Okay, before we do the minutes, it's the first of the year, our annual, let's elect chairman and vice chairman.
I make a motion.
Okay, do it in the microphone.
I make a motion that we elect Mr. Howard Thompson as our chairperson.
I second that.
I appreciate it. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, we need a good, a really good vice chairman. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we nominate Joseph Van Kirk to be our vice chair.
Second that.
Okay. Motion and second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank y'all for your confidence. Okay. Moving right along, we have a set of minutes from the December 20th. I think everybody was here except for BJ. Do I have a motion to... Is there any corrections or deletions, additions? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve those.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. I'll do roll call since we've been doing that. Mr. Fazekas.
Aye.
Mr. Hall.
I'm standing.
Standing, okay. Mr. Van Kirk.
Aye.
Ms. Summers.
Aye.
Ms. Robrecht.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
And also vote aye. Okay. Moving right along. Mr. Hopson, we'll start with you. Before we get started this evening, anybody that will be testifying this evening or have any statements, if you would at this time, stand and raise your right hand. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, Courtney, you want to go ahead?
Okay. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Planning Commission members. Agenda item one is a concept site plan 21-132-001 for Pine Hill Run. The concept site plan seeks approval for two 11,840 square foot research and development buildings. The site is located at 48015 Pine Hill Run in Lexington Park. The land use is industrial areas, and the zoning is industrial with a, with an IDA overlay. Use type 72, research and development services include industrial or scientific research, including limited product testing. This classification includes electronic research firms, computer software development, and pharmaceutical research laboratories, and laboratories primarily engaged in developing new methods for processing, analysis, and testing for manufacturing or medical activities. The purpose of the office and industrial districts is to provide and protect areas for industrial and office development consistent with the comprehensive plan, accommodate new and existing technology-based and other industries and businesses in campus settings within the growth areas with adequate infrastructure and facilities, and provide for nearby services for employees, and allow for the provisions of services and facilities needed to accommodate planned employment destiny, densities. Per the comprehensive plan, Lexington Park is a development district. They are primary growth centers that are urban and pattern-informed, designated for intensive residential, commercial, and industrial development, supported by a priority for provision of community facilities, services, and amenities. The public notice for the Planning Commission public hearing was published in the Southern Maryland News on December 24th and December 31st. The property has been posted in accordance with the CZO requirements, section 21.3.3. Certified mail receipts have been received and have been entered into the record of this public hearing as exhibit one, and the agenda was posted on the website on January The concept site plan was reviewed at the TEC meeting that was held on February 24th, The use of research and development services, type number 72, is a permitted use in the industrial zoning district. And for all non-residential and multifamily residential projects that require major site plan approval, a concept site plan shall first be approved by the Planning Commission before the major site plan may be processed for approval by the planning director. This is a public hearing which enables all who wish to provide information to the Planning Commission. In order to approve the concept site plan, the Planning Commission shall make the findings that the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable functional plans, may be served by adequate public facilities as required by section 70.2.2, will promote the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, will adequately developed recreational and other community amenities are provided in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive zoning ordinance, and is consistent with chapter 62 design objectives. This concludes the staff's report and is entered into the record of this public hearing as exhibit two. Representing applicant is Jay Hopson with Jay Hopson Consulting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for me at this time.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of staff?
I have a couple. Could you go back to slide five? The first one that shows the land use. Okay, on this one, those are two separate properties that are zoned industrial?
Well, this is all one property, but there are two different addresses for, for the two different buildings that have been assigned.
No, I mean, to the, to the right of those two buildings, the other piece of properties that's also zoned.
Industrial.
Industrial. How about the, what looks to be wooded? Do you know, do you know what that is?
Um...
Not the residential. We can see what that is, right, you know, right.
It looks like it says residential low-density open space.
Also owned by the Navy.
Military installation.
Yeah, it's owned by...
But that's part of the Navy?
It's owned by the Navy. Forty-two point four-six acres.
You're talking about to the bottom of where it says land use industrial, that...
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
In this area.
Okay.
In my mouth, yeah.
And on the, on the next slide, what is that?
FED. I'm assuming that means federally owned land?
No, I'm talking about the red.
Oh, that is showing the IDA overlay.
Okay. I think that's all I have for you, Courtney.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, Mr. Hopson.
Good evening, sir. Could you give us your name and address, please? Good evening. Jay Hopson, PO Box 462, Solomon's, Maryland. So we're here tonight for the Pine Hill Development. The site's located at the end of Pine Hill Run, just south of the wastewater treatment plant that's owned by Metcom. The base is up to the north there, obviously. All right, next slide. Located on Pine Hill Run Road, just northwest of Pine Hill Wastewater Treatment Plant, the original parcel was 11.18 acres total, portion of the property is in the IDA critical area. The parcel has a boundary line adjustment plat to accommodate the buildings. The remaining approximately 10.2 acres is now a separate parcel and is being offered to the St. Mary's Metropolitan Commission for future expansion of the treatment plant. The buildings will be constructed in two phases. The first phase will start immediately upon approval. The second phase will likely begin within one or two years. Parking facility, as well as stormwater for the entire development, will be installed with the first phase. No traffic was required due to the limited trips of 17 vehicles per hour from the two buildings. We have submitted APF form, and they've signed off on that as well for traffic. This is the site as it exists today. Pine Hill Run to the north, go ahead and hit that space floor once. So that's up there. Hit it again, Courtney. The site is right there. The 10-acre parcel is immediately east of it. We just adjusted that boundary line to use, take the usable area of the lot. Building restriction lines, go ahead Courtney. Set in there like that, and then hit it again, Courtney. Existing buildings on the site, office buildings, same type of thing, research and development. Go ahead. We have the existing stormwater pond, the non-tidal wetlands to the south of the site, and 25-foot non-tidal buffer yard. This is the area where the building was set in, or the two buildings.
That's both the buildings?
The both buildings are set in.
Right there, where the gray?
Just in that, that's not the building, just the location.
But that's the area they're going to be in?
Correct.
The limit of disturbance, would that be a way of saying that area?
Limits of disturbance is a little bit more than that. I just stuck this in to show where that, the development area was going to be. Next slide, Courtney. So this is zoomed up on that area, and it's a little confusing because north is, is turned a little bit to get it on the sheet. So Pine Hill Run is actually to the left there. The two dark shaded are obviously the buildings, the parking area inside the thousand-foot critical area line. The plantings you see here shown are required for, that's the minimum required. That's what's required for disturbance in the critical area, plus a few of the, the street trees. Now, there'll be a lot more landscaping with that that the developer will put in, but I wanted to show what was required.
Jay, while you have that up, even the last slide, I had a quick question. You had Courtney show the building restriction lines.
Yes.
One of your notes on the front of the plans says that a setback reduction agreement with the neighboring property has been established to allow the grantee to build within 10-foot of the side property, but I didn't see that it was within any of the building restriction line.
Yeah, I did show, probably should have shown that on here. I did not. Can you, can you go up, well, go back to that last slide? I'm sorry, the next, where we were. The, the two buildings set, you see the, the small dash line to the top of the building? That's the, that's the building restriction line across there. Now, Mr. Wilson owns the top parcel and this parcel right now, so he granted himself a waiver of that side yard.
Well, of course he is. He owns both of them.
That's right.
And if I can interrupt you, Mr. Hopson, just for clarification, so the... Can you repeat that phrase, that the building setback reduction?
Yeah.
Is only, is only happening on the north side of the project that faces the other project, or the other land at the...
Is industrial. Correct.
So you're not asking for setback reduction on the side facing the wetlands?
No, no, just, just to the north.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And then, and then for stormwater management, we've provided a submerged gravel wetland in the back near the wetland locations.
So the reduction is industrial to industrial?
It is.
Okay.
It is. Next slide. So this is the materials, this, this is the building itself with the brick and the split block. Each of them will have an office area as well as a overhead door to their shop. Next slide, please. This is where it'll look like overhead, looking at the two buildings there. Next slide. More of the same. Go ahead, Courtney. And the last one. That's all I've got. If you have any questions?
Can, can you give me a little background on what they think is going to go in there in terms of...
I believe the client already has a, a leasing for one of the buildings. It's contractor-owned base, and, and I suspect that's what'll go in the second one as well.
But do you...
Now, there's, there's multiple units there. I think each one has four units, so there'll be base contractors doing research and development for that.
Again, more specifically, do you think there's going to be any, you talked about laboratories. That's basically what I wanted to know. What kind of, are there going to be labs? And if so, are there any specific labs that you're aware of that are going to go in there?
No, none, none that I am aware of, but, but when we're speaking about labs for the contractors on base, it's not the typical medical-type lab you see. It's mostly tools and specialty tools for, for what they're doing out there. But I'm not aware of anybody going, or who's going in there above my pay grade.
How do we come to the 17 cars per hour?
That comes from the, the traffic consultant that we hired to prepare the APF form, and that's just from those two buildings, not the entire development.
What's the expected capacity given the, the current leasing, leasing?
Vehicle?
Of the building. I mean, how many cubicles, I mean, I mean...
I have no idea. That's interior, again, above my pay grade. The client is, I believe, calling in, has he called in?
They have, they've not joined the Zoom meeting.
They were supposed to call in so that they could answer those type of questions.
That was part of my next question that Mr. Hall asked was, the 17 is from the new buildings.
Yes.
But typically, when they do a site that already has existing, all that's lumped into one and say, now, you know, we had 30 or whatever, now we're going to have this many more.
Yeah, and I believe you'll find that in, in, on the table on the cover sheet, 70.5. It'll give you the total ADT on that.
Yeah, it was hard, like I say, some of them sheets, I looked at some of the sheets that somebody provided that very hard to read.
Oh, really?
So...
And I don't have a hard copy with me.
If somebody's going to be calling in, certainly, they...
Yeah, I would think so.
They would be able to answer.
Sure, yeah. Oh, there you go. So the, so the total, total trip generation, peak hourly volume from the development is 55 vehicles per hour.
So with 55, we exceed the 50. So wouldn't, wouldn't that have required a traffic impact study?
They did not require one for that.
Who's that? The state did not?
County.
County. That's a county road.
Yes, DPW.
We can talk to Mr. Mills about that if you want. Mr. Mills, are you with us? Are you with us, Donnie?
I am here.
Okay. Let me swear you in before we, we hit you with a couple of questions. Do you declare and affirm, do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have a question for you, Donnie. Hold on a second.
Oh, Don, Joe Van Kirk, how are you this evening?
Okay.
Just was wondering, even though the two new buildings does not require any improvements, and the first four or five buildings being under 50 wouldn't have required any improvements, but now they exceed what would have required a traffic impact study, and we did not have one done. Why was that?
So, from a, from a traffic standpoint, any existing counts that were taken, so there's probably data, I'm going to say there's data, and in this case, for the state has collected some data on the main drag going in there, drawing a blank at what that road name is. But it was one of the roads on our APF form, Forest Park Road, that would have had that data. So that ADT and the peak hour volume would have included any uses that were already there, that existed prior to this project. So on the APF that was submitted to us, they were, like you said, they were less than 50. So normally, you would not do a traffic impact study for that case.
Are these two new buildings using the same entrance and, and exit as the four or five old buildings?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Right, you, it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily trick, trigger a traffic impact study because they're not over the 50 peak hour trips with this development. And again, the counts that you'll see, if you look at exhibit six, you know, in the package, that's the APF form, and you can see on there, peak hour volumes for the road that were used to determine the level of service of, of the road networks there, near this project. So, so again, this project wouldn't have triggered because it's less than 50 peak hour trips, and the existing uses that were there, that those other buildings that you're talking about on this, on this property, on the subject property, actually is already included in these counts. So there, there's, you know, if your level of service is acceptable here, that's, that's where we were going with it from a critical lane volume.
Mr. Mills? This is Joe Fazekas. So I think I just maybe need you to explain to me a little bit better about the level of service. So I live in Cedar Cove, HUD, and it's, it's a well-known fact with me and my neighbors that you don't try to go out and do errands before nine o'clock in the morning because 712 from, from Hermanville, from, from 235 to Gate 3 is backed up sometimes all the way onto 235. And it varies by day. It's not usually the entire time, but it is near impossible to make a left-hand turn from Long Lane onto 712 South, I guess it would be called, or West. How is that, I mean, if I'm reading your, your memo correctly from December 9th, how's that LOSD? I mean, I know the rest of the time, besides the morning, going into the base, it is free-flow. It is actually, there really isn't much problems on, on, on Forest Park there. My biggest concerns is that there is a failure for a short period of time in the morning, and that even adding one car to a failing facility is, is going to cause more harm. You know, getting emergency services in and out of our development is going to be a problem. They're going to have to try to drive against traffic with all the cars being queued, getting, trying to get into the base in the morning. And there aren't, you know, proper shoulders the entire length. There are sections of Forest Park or 712 that have wide shoulders, but it's not contiguous or continuous. So, you know, as our development in this area is now, I've got grave concerns about emergency access in the morning for myself and our neighbors, and, and I might be speaking to the people who actually live on Pine Hill, because, Pine, yeah, Pine Hill, I'm sorry. Although I, I think once you're off of Forest Park, and, you know, the bulk of that volume is going onto the base, that's not going to be a concern. So I don't think there's any, you know, I have no concerns, and I'm not sure if, you know, we only saw one public comment about traffic before this meeting about, you know, traffic from one of the Pine Hill residents, but I'm just, can you enlighten me or just maybe clarify some things for me about, about that? You know, if the, if the, if the cars are queuing from Gate 3 all the way up to 235, that's about 1.1, 1.2 miles gridlock, you know, for a certain period of, of the day, and it's just the AN there, how's that considered LOSD, which is supposed to be almost free-flowing, right?
Well, no, D is not free-flowing, but, but it's, let's call it reasonable. It, that, those descriptions, you know, we could, I can elaborate on those a little bit more, but, you know, it takes a little more, I'm going to call it, let's, so that I'm stating correctly to you, I, I would rather give you, you know, examples or something like that to, to kind of show you what that, how that level of service is, is done as a, as a overall engineering practice. So keep in mind that this...
Go on.
So this, 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 when you talk about the ITE, this group of, of transportation engineers that have been working on, on site-specific and, and doing analysis for how their trip generations are determined, and they also look at road networks and how that, that's affected. Because there are certain decisions that need to be made too when you talk about percentages and distribution and all of that. But in this case, and I hear what you're saying about the, and I want to call it, this could be extended over a peak hour instead of it just being one specific hour, you know, in this case with the base. It could be that you notice, I'm going to call it, side approach delays. So when you have an unsignalized intersection, the side approach delay starts playing. In other words, you feel like you're sitting there much longer than you probably should and you're like, this isn't right. But our ordinance speaks specifically to the critical lane volume, which is more of a movement calculation. So that would be the number of vehicles. Yes, the main line does play a component in that critical lane volume calculation. But one other point that you would be, you know, you need to like, when you're talking about, when you're talking about the level of service, there's cases where the volume seems very intense for a short burst. One of those examples is Route 4 and 5 towards Leonard Town. And, you know, it's very noticeable there at the school when that's all open. It feels like total gridlock all the way in that whole area, everywhere. And, but what the problem is, is when you talk about it from an overall peak hour, or let's call it from that 7 to 9 range, it's really not as bad. And just as you mentioned, that it opens up, you know, kind of when that main line subsides, well, then it's pretty much, yeah, you can get out, you know, you got to fit your gap in where you can get out onto the roadway, but you can do it.
Sure.
If you talk about, so if you do talk about having an emergency situation at the, you know, during that time when it's very, very much over capacity or what you think is over capacity and people can't get off the road, that, you know, from a safety standpoint, that is something to maybe think about. And I'm glad you bring that up now because it's a good point for us because we're getting ready to start on the, our, you know, St. Mary's County Priority Letter to the state. So that is a state road that you're referring to, that 712. So that might be something for us to request. And although we, you know, obviously it's been going on for a while, you know, it hasn't been on the priority letter to date, so.
Mr. Mills, actually, it's almost like you're reading my mind. I was actually talking to Mr. Dietrich about, before I realized it was a state route, for some reason I was under the impression it was a county route, about adding some safer pedestrian crossings where 235 meets Forest Park because there's a large number of children who live in the, I'm just trying to look on the map here, Baywoods Road Development, who ride their bikes and walk up to the grocery store, the convenience store right there at Hermanville. And so they have to actually walk along one side of Forest Park where there's a wide shoulder the developer put in. Then they have to cross the road in a curve, which is not the safest place and it's unmarked, to get on the other side to then try to cross three notches. So that was something I was previously talking about, that there's pedestrian concerns. But this project, I guess, brought to light to me that, you know, there's a lack of continuous shoulders along this state route. I mean, most of Maryland state routes have really nice wide shoulders and there are certain sections where it has already been put in. But there's lots where, right after that, you know, yellow line marking the end of the cartway, you're a foot or so into a deep ditch. Some of those are even channelized, you know, concrete culverts, you know, diverting rainwater in certain directions. So I don't think it's going to be an easy thing as simply just, you know, paving slightly wider there. You know, it's just, I think we've got an emergency management situation that exists right now without talking about the project in front of us. So it's now, of course, the fall of the project, you know, at hand. And, you know, being reasonable and stuff, it doesn't sound like the project's going to add much more to the situation. But again, my concern is just, you know, in that event, in that time period, when they're queuing up to get onto the base there, and of course now, these days, right now, maybe not the best idea with COVID, if you went out tomorrow, you might not see the same kind of traffic I've been talking about, but definitely the pre-COVID numbers, you know, you would back up all the way to 235 and with, you know, that tight of a gridlock, with most of them not having a shoulder to pull over to, and then the oncoming traffic from the developments and from the industrial areas and from the base going, I get my directions here, getting southbound, I guess it would be, or westbound in my head. You know, I don't see where they could safely, you know, pull off so that a fire engine or big equipment could actually get down that road during that time period. I know the rest of the day, it's probably not an issue, but it's at one point in time. And that's where I was a little concerned that this applicant did not need to put any kind of traffic study in because I think I would have been interested in seeing some more numbers just about that time period. And then is there any kind of thing that could be done, working with the state, working with the county, to improve some of those gaps along 712 that wouldn't just benefit, you know, the project we're speaking about tonight, but just all the residents in general? So I don't know if I'm really expecting a response from you, I'm just, you know, that's where my concerns lie. And yeah, if you are looking at putting priorities for the state, I would definitely put 712 close to the top. I mean, it is access to our base and a lot of people from south of the base use that entrance. And, you know, I would say that it's, there's some large, you know, emergency access concerns on that route that need to be addressed, separate from this project. So that's all I have.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, exactly, separate from this project. But I hear what you're saying and we will get that going on the priority letter. You know, the priority letter, just to be clear, you know, all of that goes to the commissioners and, you know, that's where it gets finalized. But identifying something like this, you know, in this case is a good thing to do it now and will, you know, this is actually, you know, maybe not the proper venue to actually talk about this kind of thing, but anyway, it is a good point to make, so.
Well, thank you, appreciate that. Those are my only concerns about the project, it's really just that existing condition on 712.
Do you all know about any projects that are supposed to be happening right there at Gate 3? Are you familiar with those? Because I know the county was put, we diverted money toward a project, I believe we did, toward a project at Gate 3. And I was wondering if anybody was aware of that.
There was a proposal to make some recreation space, but the original proposals had them coming down 712 and maybe going down Long Lane. And the latest proposal I heard is going to the farmer's market south of this and then continuing to that piece of property that the county owns. So I don't think that has any effect with this.
I thought it was supposed to be at the gate. If nobody's familiar with the project, I'm not sure, Mr. Hunter, you? Okay. Had to revisit that because I think they took money from Patuxent Homes to divert over there to that project, I believe. I gotta do some research on that.
Yeah, I haven't heard that.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and open it up to public testimony. Courtney, you want to see if anybody's called in? And we know we did get the developer theirself to call in, did we?
Mr. Parlat was going to call in on public comments, he couldn't get through on the other.
Planning Commission Public Hearing.
Hi, Ms. Wood, do we have anyone on hold wishing to speak?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, thank you for holding. You've reached the January 10th Planning Commission Meeting. We're discussing Concept Site Plan 21-132-001 for Pine Hill Run. If you could please provide your name and address and then our chairman will swear you in.
Not a problem, my name is David McKay Skinner Jr. My address is 21705 Galatia, G-A-L-A-T-E-A, Lexington Park, Maryland, 20653. I'm the HOA Vice President for Section 1, representing the Section 1 HOA.
Okay, sir, could you do me a favor and give us your name and address one more time? We had to redirect a microphone to pick you up better.
Sure, David M. Skinner Jr. My address is 21705 Galatia, G-A-L-A-T-E-A Street. And I represent the Cedar Cove Section 1 HOA as the Vice President.
Okay, sir, do you declare, if you'd raise your right hand, do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Yes, as I stated, my name is Dave Skinner, I represent Cedar Cove Section 1 HOA. We have some serious concerns about our street Pine Hill Run Road. I represent the lower half off of Pine Hill Run Road and as well as the Long Lane. Over the past three years, we had to endure a Metcom construction catastrophe on our, that left us with a dirt road impassable at times with potholes while they constructed the sewer line too. We have serious concerns about the traffic going to and from. I do believe that the 55 cars per hour is very low. There are times when we get up to 20 sewage treatment trucks that come through there in an hour. We're concerned about the noise that the construction is going to create within our area. We're also very concerned with the environmental impact that it's going to have or the home property value that's going to impact our area. As I said, we endured three years of construction on our road, Pine Hill Run Road, that basically shook the foundation of our back area in Cedar Cove Section 1. Mr. Hall, I do believe you were correct when they said that they did pull funding from a project area. That was to, I believe, repave our road so that we would stop calling the county to try to get it done. While I'm not sure of that, I'm pretty sure, according to our president, the study that wasn't done or the average that was looked at, I don't believe was done at the right time. If it was done in the last three years, we have had very little to no traffic other than homeowners, homeowners residents and the treatment trucks that have come through. Now that COVID has started to open up a little bit, we have noticed an increase in traffic. The shoulders that are coming into the base at our end on Pine Run Road or Pine Hill Run and where the base is, Forest Park, they, Forest Park in those side areas where you would be normally able to pull over and so it blocks all of that. There have been times when I haven't been able to get out of my intersection to actually go into the base for 10 to 15 minutes because the base doesn't open and there's already traffic backed up to Long Lane. Like I said, our biggest concern is traffic, the increased intensity of cars. Our neighborhood has been through a traumatizing three years with the sewage treatment plant, construction and the tubes going in and out of our yards. The smell was unbelievable and it took what we feel in our area was almost an act of the Lord Almighty to give us a paved road. Other than that, that is all I have. I'm sorry, I wasn't really prepared, but that's what I have. We here just have major concerns about anything that's going in the back area. 100, I believe Section 1 has 122 residents. Of those 122, or 122 homes, out of those 122 homes, 60, I just didn't count, 69 of them are on the backside where Forest Run is or Pine Hill Run Road is. If you average that, if each one of them has two cars, which I know I have four, that comes up to 138 cars that are coming in and out of there on a daily basis. I do believe that's going to, you know, if you could take even a third of that and push it towards, you're going to exceed the amount of cars now that it's paved going to and from that facility as well as sewage treatment trucks. I think this really needs to be seriously looked at. Please don't put our neighborhood through another construction zone area again. Don't add to the already traumatic three years that we've already gone through. And I thank you for your time.
Okay, hold on please, Mr. Skinner. Do any of the board members have any questions, Mr. Skinner? Okay, Mr. Skinner, we thank you. I'd like to ask Kristi Hollander a question if I could. Kristi, are you out there?
Yes, excuse me, yes, sir, I'm here.
Caught you off guard, didn't I?
No, you're good, I'm wrapping up the end of a cold and.
All right, I'm going to swear you in first, Kristi, raise your right hand.
Oh, sure.
Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, give us your name and where you work, Kristi.
Sure, Kristi Hollander, I am the Chief Engineer at St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission.
Okay, did you just hear the comments from Mr. Skinner?
I did, yes.
Are y'all going to be having any more construction going on down there?
No, so, you know, just to kind of follow up on his comments, it was terrible situation. We had a project where the contractor mid-project went bankrupt. It was then tied up in legal matters. We finally got a new contractor out there almost a year later. We got that all wrapped up. We do understand that was a terrible situation down there and we worked through that as quickly as possible. So that's kind of the background, so no, but long story short, that's all done. We may have some work down at the treatment plant, but nothing along that road.
Okay. Well, that helps. Mr. Mills, are you still out there?
Yes, I'm here.
Did you hear the comments from Mr. Skinner that he gave us a minute ago?
I did.
Do you have any comment on that?
Well, I can tell you, we worked with Metcom on the asphalt part of it. They, I think their work really consisted of one lane and we went ahead and topped the other side as a part of our effort to, and we coordinated that with Metcom to basically make the entire roadway with a new surface after their work was done. But one of the most recent things that we actually are evaluating is we don't believe this road ever had pavement markings on it and we feel like it might be a good candidate for that. So that's something that we're looking at now. for that. So that's something that we're looking at now to see if it shouldn't have pavement marking on this roadway. So, so that does, you know, a couple things. Hopefully, although the speed's not real high on this road, it keeps people, you know, in their lane. It does help them to, you know, stay a little more focused, to stay in their lane. But, you know, I mean, it's only as good as people pay attention. So, but that is, that's another thing that we're actually looking at. I think I, I think I kind of talked about the mainline flow on Forest Park, and, and yes, when, it's probably noticeable, noticeably less now with the base kind of not working at full capacity with people going to the base. So, yeah, we're probably noticing a lot lower right now. But, but, yeah, the, the, when it's, when the base is running full bore, you know, there probably is that, that time that it makes it difficult to get out. I would, I would hope that people would be letting people that are, you know, folks that live here, that people on the mainline going in the base would be kind enough to let them out if they're trying to make the left and go towards 235. But, I don't know, maybe not everybody's nice as me, but...
Well, do you have a "Be Nice" sign over there in your shop, Mr. Mills? Not to be real...
We can make whatever, we can make you whatever sign you want.
Well, I mean, even just like a common courtesy sign, you know, I don't know. I mean, you're, that's your world, not mine. But I don't know if there's ever been such a thing. But, you know, I have seen in neighborhoods, I'll call them courtesy signs, you know, where they say, you know, "Be slow, watch out for children," things like that. Have you ever seen one that says, you know, "Be courteous, look out for left-hand turning" vehicles?
So, we stick to the, we stick to the MUTCD. So, we use that as our guidance when we're talking about, you know, signage and things like that on, on, you know, a public road. But it, you know, it's something that, you know, that one being a state road that we can, you know, we could, we could coax the state and ask them. But, you know, I mean, it's one of those things that it is just...
Well, let me, you say the state road. Now, the roads that go back into the development itself, are they state or county? We're talking about your roads. So, maybe instead of putting that sign out on the state right away, we can put it on the county right away, and we can make up those signs.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, we do try to stick to the MUTCD, you know, standard signage. But we do have the ability to make any kind of sign that we want to make.
I think it would be difficult to create a sign that would, that would help in that situation because I think most of the issues that you have when people block, block in residents is that you've zoned out because you've been in traffic for so long. And so you've been in that traffic trying to turn, you come down the road, then you're dragging down the road to get on base. Then all of a sudden, you're down there and you're blocking somebody in by accident. It's like, oh, I thought I had more space getting into the base. Not to mention, it's 6:00 in the morning. So...
To be honest with you, it doesn't matter what, where you try to get on the base. It's a jailbreak.
Yeah.
Everybody breaks for the base, and it doesn't matter if the guy ahead of you, if you're gonna block the intersection, you're gonna go and you're gonna block the intersection. Now you've got gridlock. Nobody can do anything.
Yeah.
And, and you really, you can't blame that completely on a roadway. You just can't. I mean, you have, you have to blame part of it on, on, I'm gonna call them driving inconsistencies, to be polite. But, but all of those gates are the same way. It really doesn't matter. The base still is having 100% compliance ID check, and off 235, there's some queuing. On these other roads, the only queuing is on the roads. And, and, you know, state roads, state roads are the responsibility of state roads, and they need to be, they need to be adjusted.
But I do think we probably need to at least understand what's happening right there at that intersection where we're...
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't deny. Yeah, don't deny that that's a problem. I mean, I don't. But I will tell you why the problem is. It is the traffic and the inability to get traffic moving. And, and once, once people block the road...
Well, I don't think...
Would you do that?
I don't think, I don't think it's that simple over there in that, at that intersection just because, because, because of traffic coming in, it's starting to speed up off, coming off base. So, when it start, give me a second. Don't, don't shake your head.
I'm just, I'm just saying, but it's...
You're already being disagreeing.
No, I'm not. No, go right ahead, Mr. Hall.
No, but I think, I think some of the, some of the problem is, is like, it's kind of, you're kind of, you're in a blind spot. The traffic coming off is, is difficult to see and difficult to anticipate, and it's difficult for them to see you because of how far off, offset that intersection is on, not on the 712 side, on the, what's the name of that street side? On the side street. And so it's, it is, it is positioned in a way that makes it difficult for, for both parties involved. So, I mean, it's already problematic. So I think we probably need to get a better understanding of what happens there.
Well, is there any, Mr. Mills, have you looked at any mitigation? I mean, is there something that they could do to excel, you know, to make it smoother? Flow, I mean, flow better?
You mean the developer, or do you mean maybe even the base?
I'm not even addressing the who would pay for it. I'm addressing, is there a, is there an alternative? Is there something that can be done to increase the flow?
But there is.
We're here now. How do, how do we help?
Yeah. No, but I meant, what is it? What is the...
So, I mean, just, I mean, just taking a real quick look at it, you know, at the location of the, let's call it the ID check-in station for the base, it probably wouldn't even help if that was a four-lane. Because if they're, you're so close to the check-in station for the base that they wouldn't, it wouldn't probably even free it up even if you added lanes. You know, it, it's, it goes back to that same thing I was talking about. It's, it's like at this window, and, and this may even be out of like the normal peak hour, you know, it might be at that six hour, six o'clock range to that 7:30 range, you know? So, that's just another, you know, another kind of hurdle on, you know, for something like this when you're talking about, you know, traffic volumes to this, this location. You know, I mean, there's, I mean, really, there's, there's, it's probably not, it probably wouldn't even help you if this was, you know, a four-lane road. I mean, that would require that the base would have at least two people manning this, you know, check-in, which I believe they actually do.
They do now, yes.
Already. Yeah. So, you know, they're taking a single lane and they're, they're double-checking at the gate. So they are trying to help, you know, adding an additional, let's call it an additional lane. Let's say we made it a three-lane and did like an alternate, an alternate, two lanes in the morning coming in, and two lanes in the evening going out. I don't even know if that would really get you what, you know, get a different result of what you got. I mean, it's just, it's, it's high volumes and that during that peak hour time or that, you know, that surge, that's when you're gonna get, you know, a lot of side approach delays because you don't have, you know, they're all, they're all unsignalized intersections, you know, at least till you get out to 235.
And that traffic has to spill someplace. It doesn't matter which way you're going. It spills out, it's gotta spill out somewhere.
Right.
You know, and, and it's gotta spill out somewhere.
They talked many years ago, and I've been retired since 2014 from, from down there. Not that I ever used Gate 3 much, but, but sometimes. They talked about recessing the check-in back into the base like they have on Gate 1 and 2 now. But I don't, I mean, I haven't been down there for, at that gate, probably for 10 years. I'm assuming it's still out where it was, close to the road. So that would be one of the things that they've, that they've never done. And I know at times, I've only been back on the base a couple times since I retired, but Gate 1 used to have a sign up that would say, "All commercial trucks go to Gate 3." I'm not sure if they still have that or not. So they used to shift a lot of the commercial traffic to go into Gate 3. So, and at times, I think they still do that. So that was one of the things that it's so close to the road, you know, and it wouldn't, I mean, it's not a major building out there or anything. All they gotta do is run the gate down onto the base 500 feet and put up a little, little house for the sentries to allow people. It would help some, especially for long, for long lane. But like you say, like Merle said, people's gotta get on and off, and it's always gonna cause the, I think many years ago, that gate wasn't used like it, like it is now. I mean, 20, 25 years ago, I don't think it was ever used. Matter of fact, it wouldn't even open a lot of the time. You know, you worked, so it wasn't even open. And now, now it is with more and more traffic. And like I say, with the commercial vehicles and I'm not sure how many, the one gentleman that called in said there's 30 or so sewage trucks that come in there to dump. I'm sure that's a, you know, you mix the bigger vehicles in with the smaller vehicles. Stuck out there trying to get, trying to get by and stuff is probably a, a little bit worse. But I mean, that's not, the base issue's not just developers' issue, and I understand that. I'm just making a, making a comment.
But that intersection might be, though.
Yeah, yeah. I, I wanted to ask Mr. Hopson, how long has them other buildings been there? Were these two new ones gonna be built? I mean, have they been there? I don't remember them buildings years ago, but...
They've been there since at least 1980, if you go to your GIS map.
Yeah.
And you can go back to 1980.
I don't even remember him being there.
I don't either. I've been down there many, many a time, and I didn't remember them.
If you don't go down the road, you won't see it.
Yeah, you can't really see them because it takes a long time.
But they're, they're on the same piece of property?
Yeah, 1993, they're there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I got a, I guess, a two-sided question that kind of sparked from the testimony of Mr. Skinner. So, Mr. Mills, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but would you know or have some recollection on the last time a traffic study was done on Pine Hill Run? And then, and then to follow up, if so, Ms. Hollander, would you know whether or not the volume of trucks go into your facility at the end of the road there has increased since, since the time of that last traffic study?
Okay, so, me first, then?
Yes, yes.
It sounds like, yeah, both with something. So, it sounds like you guys got the GIS map on?
Yes.
You can go, it's near the bottom in the layer list. You can go to traffic count locations. It's near the bottom of that list. They're roughly in alphabetical order.
Yes, I checked.
So, although this isn't really a traffic study per se, and there probably has never been a traffic study on Pine Hill Road, there, there may have been one when the, that subdivision was built where all these, those houses are, you got Atlanta, you know, the, the houses that are tied off to Pine Hill. There might have been a, maybe a traffic study done, but I believe that subdivision was quite a while ago, and it probably wasn't required at that time. But there are traffic counts that we do on this, you know, on our road networks. And it may not be in a subdivision per se, but Pine Hill should have some. I know that we did a traffic, we did a speed study recently, and that was prior to the Metcom's work of that pipe replacement. I could get that data. I'm not seeing it on the GIS map.
Okay.
But...
Well, I guess then the follow-up would be for, for, for Ms. Hollander, has there been a increase in traffic just from Metcom over the last, I don't know, five years, maybe?
So, that plant, we upgraded back in 2008. So there was, no, sorry, 2018, so when it was complete. But that wouldn't have added any additional traffic. So, no, it should have, it should be pretty steady. I mean, you know, it probably fluctuates, but...
Sure.
We haven't done anything down there to increase traffic.
Okay.
I'll show where they had two traffic counts. Thank you, Donnie, for pointing that out. They had one on Pine Hill Run. It doesn't give a date on that. Yes, it does, 1998. And the other one was done in the neighborhood, and that was done in 2021 was the latest one. But that was just going into the housing development itself.
Yeah, I think there's, it may not have begotten on the, because it was, it was focused more at a speed study. We were looking at people speeding on the road is what we were doing. And, you know, we had received some complaints about how fast people were driving on Pine Hill Run Road. So, we did a speed study. So maybe that's why the data's not actually showing up on our traffic counts because it's technically different. It's for speed. But I can, you know, I could, I could research that, and I could give you our action that we took, which was most likely if it was 85th percentile was speeding, then we, we alert the sheriff's office and, and they're, you know, hopefully they pick up, you know, heightened patrol there.
Okay. Courtney, you want to see if anybody else has called in?
Yes, we do have more people on hold. Good evening. Thank you for holding. You've reached the January 10th Planning Commission Meeting where we're discussing Concept Site Plan 21-132-001 for Pine Hill Run. If you could please hold for a moment, and our chair will have you introduce yourself and get you sworn in.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Could you give us your name and address first, and then we'll swear you in?
My name is Rosa Hance. My address is 45547 Stony Run Drive, Great Mills, Maryland, 20634.
Okay. Could you raise your right hand? And do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements that you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to make comments today. I'm calling out of concern to this project. And as I am reading and now hearing and seeing, this project is in fact in the critical area that is part of the state's, and keystone really, of the Tuspeake Bay Critical Area Protection Buffer Zone. It's our responsibility as stewards of this critical area to not grant exemptions unless absolutely necessary. And from everything that I'm hearing here, it doesn't, I'm just not, I'm not convinced that this project is a, is a useful and meaningful reason to obstruct the critical area. Property is less than a half mile from the bay. And being right by a wastewater treatment facility, this is actually a critical juncture. What we've seen in, over on the other side of St. Mary's County by the St. Mary's River, the colleges had significant issues with sewage and overflow. sewage and overflow, so much so that there was a need to halt harvesting of oysters in that area. And then now we're talking about on the very other side of the county that we would, you know, be infringing upon the critical area in order to build additional, you know, office and, and development buildings. And I'm, I'm hearing concerns about traffic that seem very valid. And, and really, we're talking about building, you know, potentially building this building during a period where we already have significant real estate in the area that would be suitable for the leases. We're ostensibly overbuilt. This project is not on the principles of smart growth would be, which would be infill, urban infill. However, this is actually going outwards, sprawling closer and closer towards the bay, actually literally in the most critical area that we have. So I strongly encourage you to reject this project or, or, you know, deny the critical area exemptions for, it does not seem appropriate to be built at this, as described. So thank you very much again for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Okay, hold on a second. Does any of the board members have any questions?
Not for her.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I've got a question for the Soil Conservation Service.
Well, look, hold on to that.
Yeah.
Let's get through the public testimony.
I'm sorry, it's hard for me to hear.
No, we were just, um, we're going on to the next person in public testimony.
Good evening. Thank you for holding. You've reached the Planning Commission meeting for January 10th, where we are discussing Concept Site Plan 21-132-001 for Pine Hill Run. If you could please hold, our chair will have you introduce yourself and get sworn in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Good afternoon. This is John Parlet, P O Box 460, Charlotte Hall.
Okay, John, if you would at this time, raise your right hand, and I'll swear you in. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead. You got three minutes.
It is, it is very difficult to hear you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, okay. Is that any better? I'm right on the microphone.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity this evening. I represented the owner of the property, Mr. Wilson. I've been assisting him with the development of this property. There were some questions earlier, and I could not get through on the Zoom call, so I apologize for that. The, um, the tenants, there was a question earlier regarding the tenants for the building. The first building that we're gonna construct, looks like it's pretty much gonna be completely occupied by one of the existing tenants in the Pine Hill Technology Park there. They, they grow. They're trying to grow their businesses. They obviously would like to keep their, all their employees in the same campus. So that's what really precipitated the, the idea of extending the Pine Hill Technology Park into part of the undeveloped property to create additional office space and opportunities for the, for the existing tenants. The second building presently does not have, no one we're talking to about then. And I can't really tell you when that may or may not be constructed. But I do know that the proximity close to the, to the third gate is important to a number of contractors that are in and out of the base on a regular, a regular basis. There was a question raised by the last caller regarding a critical area exemption not to be approved. To my knowledge, we don't have a critical area exemption. We are building part of this in the critical area, and we have to do certain things to allow that to happen. But I don't believe there's a formal exemption that is required for that. Mr. Hobson can certainly, can certainly speak to, to that. This, this project beyond what's already on the property at Pine Hill Technology Center will add something in excess of $4 million when it's fully completed, these two buildings, and additional tax base to the county will also provide the opportunities for additional high-paying employment in the immediate area. So the property has the appropriate zoning. We have gone through the TEC process. We have received feedback and adjusted our plans accordingly from TEC, all the TEC agencies over the last almost a year now. It's been, I guess, 10 months. By the way, I also noticed that you were looking for traffic volumes on that particular road, and I had it on my map a moment ago. There are around 7,000, on Route 712, current state maps is there's 7,594 trips per day on that, on that, that road, on Route 712. And I would point out that perhaps this building is located on Pine Hill Road, which is off of Route 712. And I heard a number of concerns about the traffic along Pine Hill, I'm sorry, along 712. And I see signs at intersections all the time on state roads and county roads, I believe, that say, "Do not block intersection" as you're approaching those intersections. You know, perhaps that would be a sign that would pass muster with the appropriate authorities to have installed at, at that location. So unless you have some, some questions, I don't have the benefit of seeing you. I just have the benefit of being able to hear you. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may, that you may add.
Okay. Hold on, Mr. Parlet. Does any, any of the board members have any questions? Mr. Parlet?
I, I had the question. John, do you...
Speaking of the microphone.
Do you have any idea what kind of laboratories specifically they were gonna put in that building?
Yeah, the, the word laboratories is kind of a overused term. This particular contractor that is, is working down there already has simulators at the Pine Hill facility. I believe they're helicopter simulators. I'm, I'm not certain. I've never, I've never been in them. They are also involved in a distribution contract for the government for spare parts for older aviation. And I believe that this particular contractor's need is for additional office space for staff and for inventory of parts that would be distributed to the world to various, um, various contract requirements that the federal government has in providing support for older aircraft.
Yeah, the reason I asked that question is because it was, I was trying to get a better idea of the number of folks that were gonna be actually residing in that building during the day, from a traffic perspective. You know, whether it's gonna be more lab space versus office space.
I can probably help everybody feel a little bit better. Mr. Hobson, how many total parking spaces are on this property? Isn't it like 228 or something?
Yeah, 224 total for all the buildings.
So, so if, if we have 224 total parking spaces, and if they were all 100% occupied, that would equate to 224 trips coming to work, maybe 224 trips going to lunch, and maybe 224 trips coming back, and 224 trips at the end of the day. More likely nowhere near, near that. These new buildings are, man, the current user or proposed user, I believe, would have a total of about 13 employees. The parking we're providing is to meet the code requirement. We don't need as much parking as is, as is required. So with the, the new building that we're proposing at 13 employees, if, again, if they all went to lunch, the total trips per day would be four times 13, 52 trips, 56 trips. I'm doing the math in my head, and that's never a good idea.
That's okay, though. I mean, you may, that was the point I really wanted made was...
The trips that are being generated by these two new buildings are very minimal. This is not traditional office space where you'd have 11,000 square feet of just nonstop office, which is what most of Pine Hill Technology Park is. It's existing office space. This space is less intense than the existing facility there.
Okay. I had a question about the, the critical area. You made a comment about it, about us not requiring like a variance or anything like that for building in the critical area. I can speak to that if you'd like. The critical area right there has an IDA overlay. If you're familiar with the critical area, the overlays vary depending on the density of the development in the area. So you have limited development area, resource conservation areas, and intensely, intense development areas. So the IDA is, is where there's intense development. There is a requirement to reduce the pollutants entering the bay by 10%, which we've done with our Smurfs gravel wetland, reducing nitrogen, phosphorus, potassium. There is no exemption for critical area. There are variances, but we're nowhere near the 100-year buffer, and that's generally where the variance is coming.
Mr. Hobson?
Yes.
Who defines whether it's intensely developed or, like, does the...
The state.
The state does.
Yes.
And, and so that's, that's existing in our GIS system now, or...
It is.
Okay.
I, I said the state, but I might have to defer to Bill on that.
Okay, but, but it's not something you're, it's not something that the client or you are deciding. This is something that's...
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Anything else from Mr. Parlet? Thank you, Mr. Parlet.
I'm sorry?
I said, "Thank you."
Okay, thank you all.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any other callers?
Hi, Ms. Wood. Do we have anyone else on hold that wishes to speak?
No, we don't.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close down public testimony. And, Mr. Hobson, you've heard the, what we've gone over. Do you have any rebuttal?
Well, I, I can't speak to the traffic. I will speak to the, the critical area. You know, when, when we developed this, we could have pushed further down towards the buffer. There's, there's adequate room for this development right next door, further, closer, closer to the shoreline. So we did pull it back to get it as far out of the critical area as we could.
All right. Well, I'll go ahead and close all the testimony and the rebuttal from the applicant, and open it up to the board for the deliberations. Anybody like to start? Anything you want to discuss?
I'll start. I just have my one concern. I don't, I don't necessarily agree with Mr. Parlet's overview of traffic is based upon the parking spaces. I've never really heard that from the county or state. I mean, because, just because there's 13 people going in the building now, it can certainly, in, in six months, have way more people than 13. And I, I know the existing buildings were built many years ago, but we've done projects before that had users, and they came on the site and did something else, and they do a total of all the trips. And if it exceeds the 50, then the, the county or state, state in this instance would require a traffic impact study. Now, with saying that, I don't think that this particular project is detrimental to the road system. But in my opinion, it should have had a traffic impact study. I mean, we have required that before, and I think it's kind of, it's either a slip between the county and the state where they said, "Oh, it's only 17." But if you add all the stuff coming in and out of that, whatever the drive is there, it would certainly exceed that. Will it make any difference to the road? Probably not. But it would show you some updated totals. I mean, the last thing showed on there, something was 1998 or something. I know they've had to have, I'm sure the Pine Hill Run in Route 5 or Point Lookout Road was probably done traffic study when they just had the, over there by the Blimpy, we had the Dollar General or something here a year ago or something, so I'm sure there was some traffic impact studies.
Storage facility.
That, yeah. But I'm not sure if there was anything done like 2017, 18, 19 prior to the pandemic that would show traffic on and off the base. I mean, that was quite extensive, quite extensive there. I just think that, I'm not saying the developer meant to do it, but it's kinda like, you know, building a 800-square-foot Walmart and putting in one little lane, next year, build another 800 square feet on it, build another 800 square feet on it. It, it's eventually gonna have 20,000 square feet and one little entrance coming in and out, because none of the projects required a traffic impact study, because they were like pieced together. And that's not what they tried to do here, but in the end, that's what was done here. So, I mean, is it detrimental to the road system? I don't necessarily think so. But I, I mean, I know we've had projects like this before that has required traffic impact studies, is my only comment. You know, I, I think it's a good project. I don't think it's a bad project or anything. But just saying that, it looks like something slipped through the, the great...
Okay. Mr. Physicus?
So, as a whole, I think the project makes sense. You know, these contractors wanna be close to the base. It's an industrial area. You're basically adding on to what's already there. And, and as the client called in and testified, one of the existing clients wants to expand. That's good. They wanna stay here in the county. They don't wanna move. And it probably makes a lot more sense to be in the same office park than to be relocated somewhere else where they're driving from facility to facility, creating more traffic problems. This looks like a walking problem, once you're, once you're at the job. And I'm happy that there's no setback, changes are being asked for along the, the wetlands or along any of the wetland areas. So from all that standpoint, it makes sense. I was a little bit thrown off by the one public comment, 'cause I didn't realize that it was in a critical area. And I do realize it's preliminary. This is not the final approval process. So I would hope that the Critical Area Commission in Annapolis is doing their part and making sure that their comments are being brought down and that the intense developed area regulations, you know, are properly followed and stuff. But even as the applicant said, there would be some replantings afterwards, which I believe is something that would be required in that area. It's, it really comes down to the traffic situation. And again, I'm a, I don't have enough information in front of me to say whether or not this project would be that extra straw, that extra 800 square feet that breaks the camel's back. But seeing that the, the county GIS doesn't have a traffic count on our, our road, I keep forgetting the name of the road here, on Pine Hill Run Road, since March 1st of 1998, I think a lot of things have changed since then. You know, my house was not built in 1998. My development was not built in 1998. You know, how many of these people are, are moving to that area, are driving to those locations. It, it's just an imperfect picture that I have of the situation. And again, towards my first comments... And again, towards my first comments, it's not that this project is going to create amount of traffic that causes problems in emergency services and access. Those problems already exist, and we've used, we've reviewed other cases in the past where there was already existing traffic problems and said, even though your store, even though your, you know, development isn't going to add much in terms of volume, you know, we don't feel it's a safe or, you know, for the residents or for, you know, the drivers because of that. I wouldn't go so far as to reject a project like this. I think it's just that I don't have all the information I need, and I would like to see some type of traffic numbers that are updated that show both what's going on along Pine Hill and what's, you know, going on on seven twelve, and maybe getting the state and the county and the Department of Navy involved and discuss some of those queuing situations. You know, is there any opportunities for the state to widen the road? So these two lanes leading state jurisdiction into federal jurisdiction, does the government not want that? Because it used to be a one man checking badges, and my wife said when they reopened Gate Three, they switched it to two people checking for your IDs. So, you know, maybe the government doesn't want that. So I think there's just some missing information here that would put me as a resident of the larger area at ease, and I think also a lot of the people who've called in. But other than that traffic situation, that's my only concerns.
Anything, Mr. Evans? Does anybody else have anything?
Nope.
All right. Well, we've deliberated. Anybody like to make a motion?
Well, being that we've had two people mention that it would be better, better off if they had additional information, should we, can we hold off to get more information to make a decision, or do we want to just go forward?
We can make a motion on anything, any way we want to go. I mean, if it's, if the board feels that it needs more information, we can make a motion that we continue until we, one, give them the type of information that we want.
I mean, my, my traffic concern, and as I said, I think that it's kind of slipped through somebody's fingers, what probably should have been done. I think if we had a traffic impact study, and remember, we're, the proposed development is a few over. And I don't, I personally don't feel that that's detrimental to, you know, where it is. Should it have had that? You know, I don't know if we should be given exceptions when it's supposed to have something. I mean, my, my personal opinion, even after mentioning the traffic, is I just don't think it was done properly. Would it have made a super difference of the cars coming in and out of there? I'm not talking about Pine Hill Run Road or the base or Metcom's property. I'm talking about that one, you know, where the few buildings are now and the added builds. I don't necessarily think it would have, but, I mean, like Chairman said, I mean, if somebody brings it up in front as a motion, we can certainly, we can certainly vote on that, but I, where it's located, and I mean, I know if it inconveniences anybody, it's an inconvenience, you know, as far as where it is. Doesn't mean that it's way back behind the housing and stuff, but, so that's just my second thoughts on the, on the traffic. I just don't think it was done properly.
I guess I would just mention it just because I know, I mean, we really don't address problematic intersections until we have cases like this where we talk about problematic intersections. And so I hate to say that this is an opportunity for us to get something that we all know is a problem resolved, but, I mean, this is what we're talking about right now.
Could I speak to something?
No.
You know?
Not really.
No.
Not at this point.
Okay.
I think the amount of traffic, knowing what the developer says that they're going to have is no more than, say, four or five houses that would be added to that housing development. And we're talking about seventy-five hundred trips a day now that they have in there. And this, if, let's just use a round number or a good number of twenty, you know, if they're coming in and out, you've got forty trips. Most people all don't leave the building and go to lunch, so I'm just going to say add another ten trips, you know, for lunch, so maybe twenty-four, maybe sixty, maybe, maybe only fifty. A lot of people just don't even go out for lunch, you know. I don't know if it's that large of an impact for that now. Do they need a traffic study to find out? I mean, it sounds like there's a problem before this came about. We haven't had a traffic study in a long time, but I don't think that this, this development is the cause of any large problems that are going to be on that road. Metcom has stated that they've finished the construction that they were going to do down there, so that's, that's been cleaned up and they fixed that road. They don't have anything on their, on their agenda as to enlarging or anything for probably quite some time, and even if they did, that would, that would just be the plant itself. It's not like they're building an, they wouldn't be, they would be building an office park or anything for themselves. So I don't think, right now, I mean, the county might want to do a count, you know, and the state put out and figure out what's going on on that highway, but then you've got to talk with the Navy and to get those three entities to sit down, that's going to take the commissioners to sit down at one of their meetings that they have with the Navy base, you know, to discuss, you know, what goes on on Gate Number Three.
Well, I mean, just, just turning off on that, I mean, like, make sure, make sure that I'm describing the issue that I'm, that I see. It's like, it, the congestion is only a part of the problem, right? So the added trips is only, you know, it's only a part of the problem at the intersection. It needs to be addressed just because, you know, there's a, an issue coming out of that intersection, turning on, making that left, and I think, I think that's what the, the witness, actually, the first, the first caller.
Skinner.
Right. He was talking about that, that initial left onto seven twelve. So when you're coming out of that, off of that street, turning onto seven twelve, you have a problem right here with people coming, coming down from, from two thirty-five, and you have a problem with people starting to ramp up coming out of the base, and there's a line of sight issue that probably needs to be addressed as well. I know it's not on their property, but I mean, if we're at least talking about the intersection, I mean, I'm not sure what we can or can't do.
And I see this project very, very similar to the Dollar General one that we listened to up in Oakville before, where the project itself was not going to be a contributor to much, if any, traffic, but it was the existing safety concerns that is the reason that we shot that down, and that's where I am right now, that whether it's a house, whether, you know, anything going, that's going to create more problems, especially in that morning segment where emergency services may not be able to get to all that entire section of Lexington Park. I mean, Lexington Park, everyone knows of, you know, off Great Mills and stuff, but this is a huge section that's kind of not connected, and I think the county, I think even we sometimes forget about that part, and, you know, we're the one part of Lexington Park that doesn't have sidewalks on the streets. We don't have the wide lanes where you can pull over if the car, you know, shuts down. We don't have good street lighting. You know, now, it's more of a rural area compared to suburban, compared to, you know, the more urbanized part of Lexington Park, but, you know, the existing conditions are there, and that, those alone are enough for me to, to, to vote no on, on adding even a single vehicle to a potential emergency management slash safety disaster, you know, waiting to happen. And that's what we're talking about with the other project, where, you know, accidents go into the landfill, you know, and coming in and out of that, that side over to the Dollar General. I see very little difference in the situation between these two projects.
Mr. Evans has been waving his glasses for like fifteen minutes.
I'm just listening, man. I'm trying to listen, so.
I think there's a couple of differences on that.
I do, too.
I do, too.
Okay.
Dollar General, there, that's, people are in there all day long. I mean, you're, you go there, if I go to a Dollar General, I'm there for fifteen minutes and I leave, then somebody else is waiting to get in my spot, whereas this is an office where I think more, the majority of the people are going to be, get there, stay, do their work, you know, that type of thing.
Right.
As far, as far as the emergency equipment and such, when they go through TEC, Mr. Hunt, maybe you can answer that part of the question for us. Doesn't, emergency services, aren't they on the review board for TEC when this is, when this rolls through?
The fire marshal is, but not emergency services from the county.
Okay.
So this is our one opportunity for their voice, since they're not part of that.
Well, let me, let me amplify. The projects are reviewed for emergency vehicles, so the, if there's a problem with access for, for the fire prevention, fire response, then we would get comments back in that regard. So we do hear or can hear whether or not there are concerns from the fire perspective, fire equipment perspective of getting the necessary equipment to a fire should one break out.
Would, Mr. Hunt, would the fire, that person on the TEC, would they be only looking at, you know, access to the actual project? Because, yeah, I don't think there's any issues right now with the way it's shown on the plans. The issue is outside of the scope of the actual project. It's the environs surrounding it.
I can't tell you what they're looking.
Yeah. I kind of figured.
And that's the problem. It's out, it's outside the scope of the project. And so, Joe, I have a question for you. Are you, were you afraid of or concerned about allowing something to happen that we haven't allowed other people, haven't, haven't allowed other people to? Well, as I stated, I don't think it was done properly. Would I probably let it sway me? I mean, that road is a problem, as we all know. Joe lives down there. I've traveled that road tens of thousands of times over thirty-three years I worked on the base. I don't know how many times, many a time. It's always been a problem. This project is doing a minimal, very minimal, I mean, if it hadn't been a traffic impact study from what I've seen over the last six years I've done this, I would say that they would, even if they made them do mitigation for five vehicles, they would have paid the county, you know, two thousand dollars.
Right.
You know, them extra couple of vehicles is not going to hinder, now, I'm not going to say it's not going to hinder, everything hinders, but it's not going to make a difference to an emergency vehicle coming in and out of there that would need it to get in there at a peak, at a peak time. But as you said, I was concerned that, it seems to be they're being allowed to do something that in most cases someone else is not allowed to do without at least showing the, the numbers, hey, we went through all the steps that we were supposed to, and maybe I'm looking at it wrong, maybe they wasn't supposed to. I don't know, but I know we've had projects before that took the existing traffic on a piece of property when they added more. They, you know, added that or was already included. Okay, yeah, so you're worried about a precedent? Yes, for the, for the most part. Like I said, I don't think this is detrimental to the road or to the. Well, it's not. I'm more worried about setting a precedence where anybody can say, you didn't make them have a traffic impact study because it was missed or overlooked. So I'm not saying it's a major, it's not a deal breaker for me is what I'm saying, but we have made other people with any number over fifty have traffic impact studies. We typically, though, maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing a point. We typically have traffic impact studies done when we're having developers pay for mitigation. It's not the case. This has nothing to do with developer paying for mitigation off-site. I mean, this has nothing to do with his development. This has to do with a road that, that people have said is failing. I travel Great Mills Road from time to time, and I've sat as many as three cycles on Great Mills Road towards the base. What you will notice is that the people along the way at Tulagi Place, people make constant left-hand turns off of Tulagi Place, about the old, you know, the old fire station, heading out of town, and they do that because traffic actually stops and allows them to do that. So I'm, I don't know, I don't, I don't see how a traffic impact study is going to, other than, other than, you know, have the developer pay for a traffic impact study to give it to the state and the county whose responsibility it is for that road. I don't, I don't, I don't get that. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that, that you want to set a precedent. I mean, I'm not saying that we're trying to allow somebody to do something that somebody else, you know, didn't have to do, but those development, I believe, Mr. Vasikas, when you mentioned those other projects, I think that's like apples and oranges in this case, because that was a developer that had direct impact with that intersection then, and that's not the case here. I mean, the case, the case here is that this is a roadway that has, we all agree, issues, and I don't believe that the impact of this development, you know, whatever the actual numbers are, there's all kinds of numbers, will, will make this markedly worse than what it is now. And I'm not saying I'm interested in making it worse at all. I'm just saying that it's, for me, having a traffic impact study on the shoulders of a developer, and, and, you know, I sit here all the time, you know, you get blamed, you know, you know, this is what you do. I'm a property rights person. I'm trying to, I'm trying to look at both sides of this. I'm trying to look at the side of this gentleman who can't get out, you know, from his road and make a left, have traffic stop, you know, let him out. I mean, that's just a common courtesy thing, and, and I don't know that. I mean, I've seen those signs that Mr. Parlet has referred to as well. Please don't, you know, you know, block the intersection. Doesn't mean they don't block it, but, but the sign's there. So at the end of it, I'm not sure, I can't get my head around, I understand that, you know, the number, Joe, that you shared. I'm just not, I'm just, I don't see the upside aside from providing the state and the county those numbers to say, hey, guys, hey, you guys need to do the right thing. This road is, needs to be, needs to be looked at, and, and when we do that, Mr. Mills may want to put that in his priority list, because you're looking way down the line for this to get, you know, taken care of, and along the way, you know, the, we all agree that people need access to the base. And if we, and if we, if we portray these roads as being fundamentally. Deficient, thank you. Deficient. That's going to be problematic for them, and I'm not, and I don't know, and I don't know how to address that either. That's beyond the scope of this, of this project, but it does concern me a bit. You keep beating a dead horse about the infrastructure. Infrastructure's failing. The person complained about, was complaining about the sewer system. They're all hooked to the sewer system. If they don't upgrade the sewer system and don't fix the sewer system, then, then they don't live there, pretty simply, and frankly, it isn't a position to be around when they're tearing up sewer systems, replacing pipes, doing all those things, and the mitigation that they talked about with regard, we did it in our community, they came down, did a traffic speed study, it was, and I requested by, you know, sent them a letter saying we'd like the traffic, you know, limits to be reduced, and they did, and it helped. It helped. But the people that are generally, I said of the trucks, a lot of those people that speed in those communities are the people that live in the communities. And again, we're talking, we're talking about a development that is, is just part of an existing campus, and I think that the benefits of that, those buildings outweigh the issue with regard to traffic and with regard to the, the requirement of a, and I'm not opposed to the traffic study, it's just you're putting that on the shoulders of the, of the developer, and it's the state and the county that is, that's, you know, that needs, that will ultimately. ultimately address it, however it gets, it gets done. But Mr. Mills is right. You could put a four, you could put a four-lane highway at the end of that road, if it goes from two to four, traffic stays exactly the same. It's just in a different place. You know, it's just queues up differently.
I, I mean, I, I definitely agree with what you're saying about certain, certain aspects, well, certain aspects of what you're saying. But I'm talking about safety here, and, I mean, we, we're talking about potentially having an issue coming out of that intersection. That, that could get someone hurt. You know, if, if someone is not seen coming out of there, or if they don't see one coming traffic, it could be problematic. And so, I mean, we're talking about minor adjustments, but any adjustments would, would be a problem. And, and the only reason why I'm mentioning it now is like, it's like, let's, let's think to ourselves, like, should we force, I mean, should we allow additional people to develop in or increase the traffic when we know that it's, there's a, a, a potential safety issue there? Or should we make sure that that's fixed before they, before we increase the, the congestion there? So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just like, so, so at, at what point do we just say, all right, that needs to be fixed prior to this development?
Well, if, if that was, if that were the case, I mean, I don't disagree with you that, you know, when you step in your car every day, whenever, it's problematic, period. I don't care who you are, or how well you, or how well you know the road.
Roger that.
It's, it's problematic. And so, if, if we were to say that we are not going to allow anything to happen in the county based on the infrastructure of roadways today, if, if we had that ability, there would, there would be an absolute moratorium in St. Mary's County, period. Because, because there are, there are no, there are no intersections in this, whether they're built by the state or whatever, especially the state, where they don't fail. They are, they're, they fail the day they're constructed. And two-four and two-thirty-five fails the day it was constructed, and yet there it is. And so, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out how we as a community grow, as a community, address the needs of the people that wanna do business here, address the needs of the Navy certainly. How do we do that in an incremental way that, that makes us as safe as we can be? I just don't believe, I mean, I don't believe that, you know, requiring this traffic study by this developer is going to make that road.
You're right. The, the traffic study, you're right. You know, because at, at this point, we're just, we're just counting.
Yeah. I thought it is.
But, but if, if we understand that it's a problematic intersection, and we know that we have all of these problematic intersections, what, what can we do in this, in, in this instance, in those, in all of these instances?
That's what I was asking, Mr. Mills, is what?
What mitigation is there?
What mitigation is there?
Well, the best they can do is put us on the state list. Because that's where the money comes from.
Well, could they, could, could they assist the county to make this, to, to help us get this done?
Well, he said he would. He said he would put this particular road.
Yes.
You know, on that, on that list.
No, but this is not a state road. That's not a state road, trying to fix something, you see, what we, is there something we can do on the road that leads to it? Is there something we can do on the county road?
That would be, that would be up to the county.
That's what he was trying to say to us, that even if he put in four.
No, but that's, but that's going into the base, that's not, that's not the county road.
The problem is, if it was something as simple as like putting a freeway stop sign, if it was something as simple as putting a three-way stop sign where Pine Hill Run hits Forest Park, that could probably solve a lot of concerns with people getting in and out right there.
Absolutely.
Zooming out of the base. But the problem is, we as a county don't have jurisdiction over that. That's a state route.
Right.
And state routes generally don't want stop signs on state routes. So, that's, that's a huge concern. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm torn, because, because like we're all saying, Mr. Evans is saying, the, the, the problem already exists, and, and even after, let's just say, we, we made that condition and, and the applicant came back and said, here's your traffic study, how long is it gonna take to, to, to rectify? And, and how is that tied to the project? And I don't see.
So, we just say, we just say, screw it. Let's not worry about it.
Or you stop everything, or you just say, look, you know, this is gonna be a bad thing, we're gonna deny this, and we're gonna deny everything else where we have a problem. We, and, and we just can't, we can't do that. We, we, we need to address the issue, there's no doubt about that. And, but we can't make obituaries on state roads. We can't do that. The one, the, the development we just talked about with regard to Royal Farms is a good example, where there was, where we're heading out of Oaks Road, and the way it was, it was engineered, there were two lefts heading out. And it's like, hell no. That's not gonna happen. We can't do that. There are too many of those in St. Mary's County that are failing. The only way that works is if you have a, a left dedicated, a left and a straight through, and a right dedicated. That's the only way that intersection works. Now, will that meet, will that meet the criteria for the state? Because in the county center, they've gotta raise, they've gotta raise it to C. It's gotta be a C. So, in that case, we could. And we could do that because the developer is paying for it. We said, listen, you want this to work? This is how this works. The developer's paying for it. In this case, that's not, that's not the case. I mean, it just isn't the case. What we would do is get a traffic, a traffic study and hand it to the, the, the state and the county and say, this is your problem, and then we would just be, we would wait, we would wait for funding, I guess. I, I don't know. I don't know. And in the meantime, I see this as an opportunity for that, with minimal impact, to be able to address a need of, of this person that needs to expand on the same campus. Not, as Joe said, not going from one place to another and back and forth on the same campus. And I, I just see that, that, that impact is, is more palatable as the alternative, I guess. That's right.
Start using more words. I think he's just beating me in word count.
I heard it.
It's age, it's age. Okay. I think we have deliberated enough. I could start all over again and do it up, but it sounds like we have one or two, possibly three options that we can go with, for it, against it, or ask for a traffic study to come back, which we don't even, you know, we've just discussed what, what the traffic study would or wouldn't do, so.
Can, can we make, make a motion and then do a, so a straw vote? What I, what I don't wanna do is I don't want to make a motion for approval and it be denied, because I don't think that's appropriate here. I just don't. And on the other side of it is, I'm not, I'm not convinced that the traffic study is beneficial at all, at all. You know, so, I mean, I'm of the, I mean, I would be willing to make a motion to approve this, but I, what I don't, what I don't wanna do is to, is to have it denied, and then we'd be done. I mean, that just puts everybody in.
I don't think we can do a straw poll after we make a motion.
Right.
I'm gonna ask my legal compadres back there, take your pick, who's coming up? Or you can just shake.
He's already shaking his head no. He hasn't stood up.
I think you just have to have a motion.
Well, yeah, I could do the motion.
Maybe.
Yeah. Can I do the motion and ask for, there you go. See that? Didn't even stand up.
No, no, come on up. It's, it's my party, so, I wanna make sure that I'm doing it right. You're saying that he can make a motion? I can get a second, we can have a straw poll afterwards?
You can have a discussion after the second, but.
Can we have a straw poll before a motion?
What you guys do, right? You, you make a motion and you vote it up or you vote it down?
Exactly.
If you don't think you have the votes and that, and you don't want it to go down, then you make a motion to continue. I, you know.
You're being attorney, man.
You're doing very well, Mr. Evans.
I did a little something down here.
The motion failed.
We appreciate it.
We asked our counsel his opinion, and he gave it to us.
I like your opinion.
We, we appreciate you being.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Dave. I guess. So, where am I? Where am I supposed to?
If you wanna make a motion, you make a motion, Mr. Evans.
In a matter of concept site plan number twenty-one dash one-three-two zero-zero-zero-zero-one, Pine Hill Run, having accepted the staff report and having made a finding that the objectives of section sixty dot six of the comprehensive zoning ordinance have been met, and noting that the reference project has, has met all the requirements for concept approval, I move that the concept plan be approved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, you got a second for Ms. Summers. Okay, gonna do roll call with the same roll call.
Any discussion?
Any discussion, excuse me.
So, this is where we do straw poll?
You're, you're not putting that condition.
What condition?
That any road improvements required?
I, you know, Patty, I, the, the idea, I, I'm not, the idea of putting this on the shoulders of a contractor or developer.
Have to change entry order.
For the purpose of benefiting the state and the county to give them marching orders, this doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
I mean, it just, it just doesn't. And I know, you know, I get it, BJ, I mean, I, I.
It's not, it's not for the county, it's not for the state.
It is.
No, it's for the people.
No, it, no.
The people of the county.
You have to have the county pay for us to benefit the people.
But it's a safety issue.
But you can say all you want, it's for the people, it's for the people. You can do that until hell freezes over.
True.
Back of the matter is, unless you have the money, unless you have the money, or it's in the budget, to fix this.
No, it, it benefits the state or the county's, it benefits the state or the county's budget. You're right.
BJ, I.
It's, it's for the people.
I have a comment, it's not appropriate for right now, but.
All right.
But, you know, but anyway.
I have a quick discussion about that.
Getting past discussion.
Well, I think we're, I just.
I didn't mean you, Mr. Van Kirk.
The only thing I'll say about discussion is, if the, if it's proved, and the state comes back and says, oh, we want that entrance wider, and we didn't put this in there, then I don't really have to do it.
That's right.
Because, I mean, I technically think that this is being put in every.
And it has been.
In every motion, not to be detrimental to the, to the applicants. I just, and then, we're, we're not saying something that we're saying, we're saying something, if the county or state says they want something done, it's.
It's not actually gonna be the state part of that, it's gonna, that's on the county.
That was my only comment on that. I mean, I'd like to.
Would you take a friendly amendment to your motion?
And that would be?
If there are any improvements needed.
Oh, you mean, for what you're talking about?
Required, what's written there, what's required by the state, if it's required by the state or county.
If it's required.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah.
That's all I meant.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Any new improvements required by the state, county must be concurrent with the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Actually, I got sidetracked when.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's fine.
So, I have an amendment. Do you accept, do you still?
Yes.
Okay, we still have a second. Hey, hey, we're coming forward, moving forward. Okay, I'm gonna do roll call. Mr. Fazekas.
For the safety of my neighbors, I vote nay.
Okay. Mr. Hall?
Nay.
Mr. Van Kirk?
Aye.
Ms. Summers?
Aye.
Ms. Robert?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hobson. Have a great evening. Good luck. Good luck this evening. Is there any other business this evening?[1721.41]